All right. We are here. Yeah, Sheriff, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning? Welcome, everybody. We're here for our weekly Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, May 29th, 2024. It's 9:00 a.m. We are here in the Senator hearing room at 555 Court Street. And the sheriff is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll join us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undergone, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sheriff Hunter. We kind of break it up a little bit. Have you lead us in the pledge? Okay, we're going to make a motion. We're going to pull an item off. Commissioner Willis?
Mr. Chair, I move that we remove item number four from the board's session agenda under the assessor's office. Consider adopting ordinance to allow eligible properties to be subject to special assessment pursuant to Chapter 94 Oregon Laws 2024, Senate Bill 1545, 2024. This is just because it's not ready. We're still planning on doing this in the future, but not right now.
I'll second your motion. Yep, we'll get it. We'll get it done. Second your motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's done. Our first item of business is a proclamation under the Board of Commissioners. And Matt Lawyer is here to have us consider approval of proclamation designating the month of May 2024 as Aviation Month in Marion County. Matt?
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Matt Lawyer, Senior Policy Analyst in the Board's Office. First, I just want to thank Commissioner Cameron for allowing me to assist in pulling together this presentation and request this proclamation. As a lifelong aviation enthusiast, I'm happy to be here today to talk about an industry that has gone off and unnoticed in Marion County.
Matt, pull that mic closer.
Marion County has had actually a very rich but very quiet aviation presence for more than 100 years. Both the UAO and SLE or Aurora State Airport and Salem Municipal Airport served as World War II training bases. In addition to the two most known airports, our two public use airports, Marion County is also home to 13 private airports and eight heliports. Marion County is also home to the Oregon Department of Aviation, which predates the Federal Aviation Administration by 17 years. We are lucky to have Sea Tech Principal Rhonda Rhodes and Salem Airport Manager John Pascal in the room with us today, just over my right shoulder. Rhonda runs the Sea Tech program, which has an aviation program designed to get high school juniors and seniors training in aviation-related fields, including drones and now their private pilot program, Private Pilots License Program. John Pascal is a former sailor in the Navy, just like myself. Fun fact about John is prior to coming to Salem Airport, he was the airport manager from Midway, not the movie, the actual island. So that was really cool. John and I talked about that a number of years ago, and I thought that was really fascinating. We have some really incredible aviation industries here in Marion County. We're home to Garmin, Metal Innovations, the B-17 Alliance, Avelo Airlines has service here. We have Columbia helicopters and others. Marion County is the home of the largest heavy lift helicopter operation in the country, which is incredible. So I'm just really excited today to talk a little bit about something I've been passionate about for my entire life and spent the better part of about 14 years in the aviation industry in some form or another, starting out, working on and around F-18 Hornets in Lemoore, California. If you don't know where Lemoore is, I don't blame you. Nobody does. And then I went over to the mighty Papa Tray, and I think Commissioner Will Tucker, if he sees this, will be familiar with it. The P-3 Orion is an anti-submarine warfare aircraft that he actually flew on a long time ago. Well, a number of years ago anyways. But the P-3 Orion, based out of Kanyoe Bay, Hawaii, was an incredible opportunity to work in that. And aviation is just a passion of mine. I love it. The only tie clip I ever wear is actually my wings from when I was in the military. Just a real call back to something I'm really passionate about. So I want to leave you with a paraphrase quote from our own Senator Betsy Johnson. Now, many don't know, but Senator Johnson is an aviation icon and probably one of the most, if not the most famous helicopter pilot from Oregon. She says, "If you give a person a mile of road, they can go a mile. But if you give them a mile of runway, you give them the world." So I'll leave you with that. And Commissioners, do you have any questions? I love putting people on the spot without letting them know. We do have Rhonda here, and we also have John, so.
Yeah. If you'd like to come up and share just a little bit about what your programs are and what you do, we'd love to hear from you. Just introduce yourself for the record. And John, you're welcome to come up, too. Thank you for being here. Grab John a chair.
Good morning. We've been so excited about aviation. It's obviously.
Rhonda, just introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Rhonda Rhodes, Principal at Sea Tech in Salem Kaiser, and now our new Sea Tech Aviation Satellite location at the Salem Airport. Aviation hasn't been a lifelong pursuit for me. It's been a really, really steep learning curve in the last couple of years. But if you're familiar with our work at Sea Tech, you know that we exist to improve our community by improving outcomes for our young people as they graduate from high school, at the same time that we fulfill these massive workforce shortages in our different industries. And so our journey in aviation's been incredible. We had an existing drones program inside of our building. And when you looked at the data, the workforce shortages in every aspect of aviation, we were able to open aircraft maintenance and airplane piloting programs alongside of our drone technology program by relocating at the airport. And if you look at the workforce, we have the ability to not only fulfill those workforce shortages, but to diversify the workforce. We have students in our community who've never had the chance to step foot on an airplane. One of our students who spoke at our ribbon cutting, if you had the chance to be there, said, "I didn't know what the word aviation meant. I'd never been on an aircraft." Now, I've stepped foot on multiple aircraft. I've logged hours in the flight simulators toward my pilot license, and I know that my career is going to be as an airplane pilot. So I'm just so thankful for our community support. The added benefit that we had, and I know we're here to focus on aviation, but by moving drones to the airport, expanding that program, and working on those workforce shortages, it left an empty space inside of Sea Tech where we had the ability to open the first of its kind in the nation in K-12 Public Education Behavioral Health and Human Services Program. The mental and behavioral health workforce shortage is impacting every aspect of our community, and Sea Tech Aviation gave us a chance to work on both of those industries simultaneously. So really exciting.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. I'm John Pascal, the Airport Manager at Salem Airport. And I've been here for nearly 13 years now, so I've got a fairly broad history here at the Salem Airport. We're thrilled to be partnered with Sea Tech. Now, the Aviation Academy opened in January. It's fantastic facility. If you have an opportunity to go take a tour, I would recommend that you do. I am a lifelong aviation enthusiast. Thanks, Matt, for sending me back a few years. Going way back, I was actually an aircraft carrier sailor during Desert Storm in 1991. So I did a combat tour on an aircraft carrier. And going way back to my childhood in upstate New York, my father worked for Carrier Air Conditioning, and he was transferred to Dubai in 1978. And if you're familiar with Dubai in 1978, it is not the Dubai that exists today. And so as a nine-year-old, I was put on a commuter aircraft from Syracuse to JFK and then on a 747 from JFK to Zurich, and then Zurich to Dubai. So when you're nine years old and you have that experience, it's, for me anyway, it was impossible not to fall in love with aviation. And for me, airports in particular, because I was always thrilled and mystified by how, when the aircraft pulled into the airports, how everything knew where to go, how your bags knew where you were, and how it transferred flights, and how things just worked seamlessly. And that's exactly what happens. And now I understand, of course, after 30 years of aviation airport experience, that it looks seamless from the outside, but it takes a heck of a lot of work and a lot of people paddling furiously every day to keep it going. So I'm thrilled to be here today. On behalf of the City of Salem and the other aviation entities in Marion County, and as Matt indicated, there are plenty, several. Salem Airport is growing phenomenally now with Commercial Air Service, Sea Tech Aviation. We've got Metal Innovations relocating down from the Aurora Airport and growing at Salem Airport. We're in the midst of several lease negotiations for multiple business jet hangars on the south end of the airport. We are working actually even on some off-airport properties. A company called Lot EV is going to develop electric semi-truck charging facility on airport property off-site. So there's a lot happening all at once. The last couple of years has been just a whirlwind of activity, and I think the momentum is going to continue to grow. We appreciate Marion County's support for our terminal renovation. Very much appreciated that. And now I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Great.
Would just comment, I think you said it right. It's a very exciting time for aviation in this region, both with the Academy and with Commercial Air Service. So thank you both for your work on those initiatives. You know, I think all of us, I think airplanes are really cool, you know? And I think all of us here do. But in this case, I mean, even if airplanes weren't cool, what you guys are doing is providing a really important service to our community. So it's fun when the stuff that you're interested in is also, you know, a real service to our community. And both Commercial Air and the Academy is making people's lives better here in Marion County. So thank you for putting your shoulders to that wheel and getting the ball rolling on those initiatives.
Yeah, John, thank you for the Commercial Air Service that I know everybody I talked to has been on that. I have not taken it. Burbank doesn't work for me. It's too far. But really proud of that, to have that and be successful and hear that they're announcing some more flights. That's a good thing. Rhonda, I'm curious, have you had any interaction with the airlines in their sponsorship or their willingness to come down and interview or interact with students? Can you, has any of that happened? Or tell us about that?
We have, one of the four pillars of Sea Tech is our robust industry involvement. That's really part of our DNA at Sea Tech. And so we've had the ability to establish relationships with Alaska Horizon, and they've interviewed some of our students. We won't have program completers until the full two-year cycle.
Right.
So students are finishing their first year, but they've already had some pretty neat intern opportunities. We have a relationship with Avelo Airlines, and one of their pilots in particular is a South Salem High School graduate. And he has recently moved back to the area to be employed with Avelo and is mentoring our students directly.
Fantastic.
And interacting with them. We've had the chance to interact with Garmin, now our neighbors across the field. Some of our military branches have been really involved. Metal Innovations, I think, is looking to hire one of our high-flying students.
And they're coming down from the Aurora Airport, right?
Right.
To Salem? Okay.
And a lot of these partners, Alaska Horizon, Metal Innovations, were in on the planning. So when this was an idea that we were pitching to the Salem Kaiser School Board and such, they were part of the planning committee to make sure that we knew exactly what we needed to build, how to equip it, what it would take to operate it. And then they've just stayed and remained partners.
Good, great.
Commissioners, if I could also add, just thinking through as Rhonda was talking, one of the advantages of a small but mighty airport is that it's so much easier for us to make these connections. So Metal Innovations is now the maintenance operator for Avelo Airlines, and they've had to do a couple of small maintenance projects on the aircraft while it's on the ground. We've been able to partner with Sea Tech and our air traffic control tower. They've had some kids interested in air traffic control, so we can take them right upstairs and let them meet the controllers. We've been able to connect them with the fire department and look at the aircraft rescue firefighting vehicles, which are unique in the way they operate. And so I love the partnerships that we have. And it's interesting, because the TSA is now hiring a Salem-based staff. They're going to add about another 10 or 12 staff members. And so having all of these partnerships and relationships at the Salem Airport, I think, is taking advantage of the momentum we have, but it's going to allow students to branch out in ways that we hadn't considered even a year ago. So it's a very exciting time for those kids. And to be honest, I was very, very envious and jealous when I saw their facilities. We did not have those kind of facilities when I was learning to Ohio. It's pretty fantastic.
I was just, I was just thinking, as you were talking about that, I go, I just gave my testimony this morning to another group, and I'm going, if, when you were talking about that, if they would have had this when I was in high school, I may be a pilot instead of a county commissioner. It'd be kind of, it would have been, yeah. It's a great, it's just so cool to hear that opportunity for our students. And to thank both of you for being here this morning and sharing. Yeah. Good?
Good.
Matt, you want to, yeah.
I want to share one more final story. So you never grew up loving aviation. My office used to be about 200 yards from John's.
And I can tell you that on more than a couple occasions, we'd have three or four or five Chinooks, the large dual rotor helicopters come out to the airport. And I still think, there were a couple times, I'd walk outside, because you just can't help but feel everything shake as they're coming in. And I know there's probably at least one time where John and I walked outside just to watch those helicopters land, because it's still very, very exciting. You know, it's a lot of fun. It's a wonderful industry, and it's very quiet in Marion County, but we're doing big things, and I think that's super great. So thank you for considering this proclamation today, Commissioners.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Matt, for bringing this. It's interesting you say that, because I didn't fly on a Chinook, but it was one of the other National Guard helicopters, the smaller ones. They're not really small, but the single rotor thing. Over to Redmond for, to see the National Guard school that they put on over there. They're not only noisy on the outside. Those things are noisy on the inside. Oh, my gosh, yeah. So thank you. Well, we want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a proclamation designating the month of May 2024 as Aviation Month in Marion County.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. If you want to start us off?
Before the Board of Commissioners from Marion County, Oregon, in the matter of proclaiming the month of May 2024 as Aviation Month in Marion County, proclamation. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners as regularly scheduled public meeting on May 29th, 2024. Whereas Marion County has had a rich but quiet relationship with the aviation industry, which can be traced back to as early as 1910, when a Curtis model airplane took off from the Oregon State Fairgrounds and circled the Capitol Building at 400 feet. And whereas Marion County is home to both the Aurora State Airport and the Salem Municipal Airport, which played critical roles in the efforts of World War II. And whereas aviation industries play a critical employment role in Marion County and offer high-paying skilled jobs to people in Marion County. And whereas Marion County is home to two public use airports, 13 private airports, and eight heliports that provide a wide range of activities from farm use and medical transportation to commercial aviation and emergency preparedness. And?
Whereas Marion County is the home to one of the newest opportunities for high school-age students to receive education in aviation-based programming, including mechanical, airframes, avionics, and pilot's licensing. And whereas Marion County is home to two of the most critical response airports in the mid Willamette Valley for statewide disaster recovery and resiliency, and recognizes the key locations and key abilities each airport has in disaster recovery and resiliency response. And whereas Marion County is home to 75% of the world's heavy lift helicopters, which play crucial role in construction, search and rescue, and disaster relief operations. Now, therefore, Marion County is proud to celebrate and proclaim May as Aviation Month, and thank the efforts of all aviation industry for the more than 100 years of continued aviation activity, both in the sky and on the ground here in Marion County, dated at Salem, Oregon, this 29th day of May, 2024.
All right. Come down and get some photos. Rhonda?
How much for you and your students? Matt, get up here. Get up there. I'll turn in a little bit, yeah.
Ready? Three, two, one. One more.
Okay, so that poster's going to go up in the airport, so if you don't want to. Whenever I fly into Orange County Airport, it's always the, uh, Orange County supervisors are up on the speaker, because they own the airport. Yeah, this is called, well, it's Orange County Supervisor. Welcome to Orange County.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you for your team.
Thanks, John. Thanks. Nice job, Matt.
Nice job. Thank you.
Thanks so much. That's good.
Yeah, I think they make money at that airport.
Do they?
Oh, yeah. I don't know. I don't think they would do it if they didn't. They'd probably fund their sheriff with it, because you know, that's who patrols the airport there.
He's not going to say no.
Is the Orange County sheriff.
He's not going to say no to a little bit more money.
Yeah.
Aviation program, I agree, sir.
Yeah. Wait, need a, doesn't Clackamas have a plane or somebody?
They do.
Yeah. Okay, so we are, we have a drone, yeah. We're just not going to put any people in it.
Can we get, come on.
All right. We got the consent calendar.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt a consent agenda under Public Works Schedule Final Consideration to Adopt an Administrative Ordinance for June 5th, 2024, for Zone Change Case Number 21-010, Land and Hatton. And Schedule Final Consideration to Adopt an Administrative Ordinance for June 5th, 2024, for Zone Change Case Number 22-003, 36th Street Property LLC.
All right, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Our first item under, is under Public Works, under Action, Approval, Approve a Construction Contract with Fairling Bridge, Inc. in the amount of $3,342,909.73, of which an estimated $2,999,592.90 will be paid with federal funds and an estimated $343,316.83 will be paid with county funds for the construction and rehabilitation of the Rambler Drive Southeast Little Pudding Bridge through October 31st, 2025. Hi, Ryan. I have Ryan's name by it.
Yeah, that's exactly right. We're filling in. It takes two of us to fill in for Ryan.
Yeah. And Brenda told me you were filling in. It says it right here. I just had to tease it.
Luckily, he did his presentation for us, so we have your movie. So for the record, Bonnie Radke.
Steve Pressler.
Good morning. Thank you. Yes, we're filling in for Ryan today to talk about Rambler Bridge. This is our bridge over the Little Pudding River that we are doing some work on this summer. The Rambler Bridge is on Rambler Road, northeast of Salem. Many folks are familiar with the unique look of this bridge. It's a long one, almost a third of a mile long, two-lane timber bridge, and it was built in 1963.
Okay. It is our second-largest bridge, and it's all timber, so it requires quite a bit of maintenance. We wanted to replace it, but cost was too high. So we did get money from ODOT to rehabilitate it. And what that looks like is getting rid of all the rot, essentially. Getting rid of the deck, redecking it, repairing the timber caps with steel, and some strengthening of some existing timber caps. Replace compromised timber piles, the ones that have rotten from the core out. Doing steel H-beams to repair those, and then replacing the existing bridge rail with a crash-tested rail, which is no small feat for a timber bridge, because it requires banding back into the timbers. And we're curious to see what a hit will do. Luckily, this bridge doesn't get many hits. But yeah, that's, was quite a feat to figure that out. And then constructing approach guardrails. So, and associated pavement, resurfacing once we're all done.
So our low bid came in at just over $3.3 million. Most of this will be covered with federal funding. $2,999,592.90, with just over 10%. County-funded, $343,316.83. We're working on this. Assuming you approve this contract, we'll be working on this this summer, planning to be done by the end of October. There will be a closure and a detour in place around Rambler Road. Any questions?
Thank you. When does the closure start and for how long?
Do you know exactly?
Probably, once we get this in place, I, he wants to get on it. So I would guess middle to late June, it'll be closed.
We leave some of this flexibility up to the contractor, but they're going to be using most of this time up through October, so to close it and work on it.
Okay. Wow. We could replace some bridges for $3.3 million, but not this one.
I don't actually know if you could, Commissioner.
We tried to get as much as we could.
I think we did one in Browns Island for under $3 million.
Oh, that's, okay, fair enough.
That's slightly different size of a bridge.
150 feet versus, not even 150 feet versus 15.
We really did try to get as much as we could on this replacement.
Then the replacement for this one would be about 10 times that much, because of its size.
Yeah. So like the $30 million, $30 million. That's like an intersection on I-5, half of an intersection. Wow. All right.
You ready, Mr. Chair?
We are.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the construction contract with Farline Bridge Incorporated in the amount of $3,342,909.73, of which an estimated $2,999,592.90 will be paid with federal funds, and an estimated $343,316.83 will be paid with county funds for the construction and rehabilitation of the Rambler Drive Southeast Little Pudding River Bridge through October 31st, 2025.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. You know, we did budgets last week. I don't know if you watched Public Works' presentation, but.
Not yet.
I want to just say this, that Brian Nicholas had said, all these projects, these capital projects, this is one of those, on top of that, $43 million in other projects that Public Works is doing on ARPA funds and all these other things. So I want to thank you for the work that you're doing that is normal work, plus all the work on top of that that's being done. So the citizens of Marion County really appreciate the work you're doing. So thank you.
We have a remarkable team. The Capital Projects team, the whole engineering division, but the Capital Projects team makes up about half of the engineering team, and Steve is one of our most experienced project managers and engineers on the team. He juggles a really insane workload, so we thank him. Probably not enough, but really do appreciate everything Steve and the whole team is doing. Just so you know, the Capital Projects team is managing, you know, different phases of the project from cradle to grave, almost $150 million worth of projects right now. So yes, while you're looking at the budget for one year, our projects obviously go over multiple years.
Right.
And so we're looking at about $150 million of projects.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. And if there's a citizen watching, if they've never driven this bridge, it's kind of a neat thing to do. It's really cool.
It is.
When does it end? When does it start? Especially on a foggy day? That's that.
That's when it's need to do it? That's the exciting.
I almost want to call it Foggy Bottom Bridge. Foggy Bottom Bridge. It's like, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
I was reading that math, Mr. Chair, and I was reading the numbers, and I was like, trying, I was like, oh, you gotta do some math here. And I just want to go, yesterday, my daughter came home, and she was learning how to do long division. And I was like, oh, I can do this. And I started doing it, and I was like, can I still do this? It was a bit of a moment.
Is that what the frame?
Yeah, yeah, it's a thing. I eventually got there.
They're still teaching that the right way?
Yeah, 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 just like the old days.
Yeah, good. It's so good, yeah.
It was a dicey situation, though.
I still have to do it once in a while.
Yeah, I'm the same way. I'm the same way.
Yeah, draw this and put the number in here and then.
Like, I could do it with my calculator, but there's just something about.
Okay, this is the numerator, and this is the denominator.
Don't ask me those things.
Yeah, it is, because it could be on top. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, we are going to go to the Sheriff's Office, and we're going to consider approval of a contract for services with O'Neill Solansky DDS LLC in the amount of $328,479.96 for, provide dental services for adults in custody at Marion County Jail from July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2027.
Good morning, everybody. Lieutenant Jacob Ramsey with the Sheriff's Office. As Commissioner mentioned, I'm here to request approval to renew our dental contract for our adults in custody at the Marion County Jail through July 1 through June 30 for $328,479.96. Boy, I said that wrong. That's embarrassing.
It's hard, man.
I know. I'm so nervous right now.
Yeah.
Anyways, Dr. Solanki has been with us for approximately 13 years. He is, he does a great service for our adults in custody in the jail. He comes in twice a week and performs basic dental services, and then he'll refer people out. We've had quite a number of referrals to go out of the facility, just because our adults in custody are staying longer, so we're having to provide a higher level of dental care for some of those individuals.
That's a note to the court system, if they want to move the process along faster, so those aren't staying as long in the-
Defense attorneys.
Jail. We'd all support that.
Bottleneck is, you're getting everybody, defense attorneys. Any questions? Other than the note to the court system? All right.
Ready? All right. Thank you, Lieutenant Ramsey. Really appreciate you being here. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the contract for services with O'Neill S. Solanki DDS LLC in the amount of $328,479.96 to provide dental services to adults in custody at the Marion County Jail from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
One more.
Thank you, Lieutenant. And our last item today, consider approval of incoming funds intergovernment agreement with the City of Salem in the amount of $900,000 to provide adults in custody work crews and supervision for the city from July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2026. Well, we got two, two of you today.
Good morning, everybody.
Commander, good to see you.
Mike Hartford with the Sheriff's Office, here with Lieutenant Jeremiah Gilmore with the Sheriff's Office. Lieutenant Gilmore is our Transition Center Operations Lieutenant. I'm here this morning, like we said, to discuss renewal of our contract with the City of Salem through June 30th, 2026, to provide adult in custody work crews for their Public Works and Parks Department to provide general landscaping, maintenance, and cleaning services through June 30th, 2026, at a not-to-exceed incoming fund amount of $900,000. This is one of several contracts we have throughout the county. We provide AIC work crews to several entities, including the county and US Forest Service. This is just one more of our normal contracts that we provide service for the county. And with that, I have, I can open it up for any questions, or Lieutenant Gilmore for any questions?
Thank you, Gilmore. Are you the one actually in charge of these work crews? Is that, is that your job?
I just oversee them.
We could bring Lieutenant Ramsey back. He used to be one of our work crew supervisors.
Ah, yeah. We got the whole, we got the whole expertise here.
Or we could bring the sheriff. He was on one of those work crews.
I don't, I don't think he gets to be sheriff if that was the case.
No, I mean, he was out there supervising. I mean, he was on them. So, yeah, you mentioned the Forest Service. Didn't you just do the lake sweep with the crew? Was, or was that?
Yeah, they're, I think they're still up there doing lake-
They're actively conducting lake sweep.
Still?
As we speak. Yeah, they started, I want to say, on the 13th of this month.
Yeah.
And they, we generally finish around the second week of June, right around that time.
Oh, so it's a two-week process, huh?
Yeah. Roughly, about a month, actually.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, this is one of those win-win-wins.
Yeah.
It's good for the community, the AICs get good time for doing this work, right? And I think it's also a benefit, you know, it's sort of, folks would rather be out working than, than maybe being in their cell all day.
Sure.
Sort of like, it's accountability, it's good for the community. Yeah, this is, this is one of those ones you want to keep going if, if you can. So I'm glad you're bringing this forward.